Is ready, I'll call the steward. Please rise for a prayer. Most heavenly and gracious Father, we ask for your guiding hand this evening and lead us through with your wisdom and strength. We ask for your blessings on this meeting and we thank you for the opportunity to serve this wonderful community. In your son's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as one.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Announcements?
I have a couple of different announcements here. At your place is a letter from Herschler Fleischer dated today. We just received this notice of a community meeting. The meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 17th at 7:00 PM at Salem Baptist Church in the Fellowship Hall that's located at 4044 Plank Road. And it is to review a proposed rezoning that is for a multifamily community with retail and office space located at 2618 Salem Church Road. And on the back of the letter, there is a map that shows the location of the parcels that are proposed. It's on the west side of Salem Church Road, just north of the VCR trail that's developed, next to Alexander Heights 55-plus apartment complex, just to orient you there. There is also a medical office that's right up on Salem Church Road that exists, and I believe the other parcels behind are currently vacant. But it wraps around those developed properties there.
Anything else?
Yes, just to bring your attention to a couple of items related to the planning update that was in your packet. Our next meeting is on August the 16th, and the Barrington rezoning in the Cortlande Voting District will be moving forward to that meeting. The Milestone Communication Tower in the Chancellor District, they're trying to work out a few more details related to the setback on their property, and so they have asked to be pushed till September. And then also, on the spreadsheet portion of the planning update, you'll notice that the Dollar General has a highlighted cell that shows the board result. The Board of Supervisors did approve the Dollar General down Courthouse Road near Lake Anna. The applicant did amend their proposal to include a right turn taper so that cars could get off the road safely before turning into the property. And so what I did was, as a result of a request from Planning Commissioner, I'll go ahead and update the summary in this manner each time so that you can see the result of what happened when it went to the board, each of the cases as they go to the board. You can see the result. I also reformatted the report to hopefully make it a little more user-friendly by dividing it clearly with the code amendments, the rezonings, the proffer amendments, and then the special use at the bottom. This document is now being posted and updated on the planning webpage, so if you ever have any citizens looking for updates on the status of projects, this resource is out there that they can look at. And that's it for announcements.
Thank you very much, Wanda. Next on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes of July 5th, 2017. I trust everybody's had a chance to review those. If there are no questions or comments, I'll take a motion on that.
I move to approve.
I'll call the vote. Mr. Burns.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. Medina.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Newhouse votes aye. That's everybody. Motion passes. Next, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. We'll move into the work session.
So today, the major thing that we have on the agenda is the first work session related to the comprehensive plan update. Have a series of items to present to you about the existing plan, proposals related to the update, information related to public outreach, and seeking input from the Planning Commission so that we can develop a schedule and move forward with a plan on how to update the plan. So really, what we're trying to do tonight is plan for the update. So what I provided in the packet, I've just put on slides, so this is exactly what's in the packet. I also have, we've got updated versions of the comprehensive plan. There were updates to the plan in 2016 at two different points. So whatever plan that you have at home is out of date. We do have updated ones here, and if you'd like to take a plan with you and just bring it each time we have a work session, that would be great. Otherwise, if you'd like to just use it during the meeting and then hand it back to Paulette, she can bring them each time. And-
Excuse me, excuse me, Wanda. Are you talking about this first one, update demographic?
Actually, I'm talking about the hard copy of the comprehensive plan, so that you can have that as a reference.
You're telling us that the whole thing is out of date?
The version that you would have received when we updated it in 2013 is out of date because in 2016, there were two updates. There was one update related to the proffer law changes, and we had to go through the plan and make a number of changes to it as a result of that. And then the thoroughfare plan had a major update to it in 2016, so-
So if we just take those two items you just mentioned and correct them in our-
Well, it affected, it affected a good half of the pages in the plan. It was really, you know, it was sporadic throughout the plan, minor changes here and there. So we ended up just updating the entire plan. The appendices are all still good, some of the maps are still good, but-
You're just talking about updating information that's already in our-
Right.
-in the old plan? Okay.
Correct, yes. These were items that went through public hearing, and the Planning Commission reviewed them, and the board ultimately approved them.
Okay.
So this plan is up to date, or the version that's out on the website is also up to So the first slide talks about Chapter 1, the introduction and vision. And this is, these series of slides here goes through chapter by chapter and provides what staff sees as necessary updates. One thing we have to do every single time is update demographic data and projections, population projections, review and amend the vision statement if that's deemed appropriate, review, update, and amend the guiding principles and strategies which guide the rest of the plan. And then, of course, at the very end, we'll pull together an action plan update. So I think those are probably pretty self-explanatory and necessary updates to Chapter 1. Chapter 2 is the land use chapter. Staff recommends that we review the current primary development boundary and determine if there are any changes that are needed to the boundaries or any policy changes needed. You'll recall that with the last update, the primary development boundary did change in a number of places. We worked with the Utilities Department, and they provided areas that could be served through gravity water and sewer, or through gravity sewer. And since then, what we've seen is some development that's leapfrogged out to the outer edge of those, and the Utilities Department isn't prepared to serve out to the outer edge at this point in time. So it may be appropriate to look at some policies that talk about, you know, growing the county from where we have the provided service outward, providing basically a transition zone to grow into. That may be an appropriate approach to address that issue because otherwise, we've got a primary development boundary area, but we're putting in drain fields to serve the new development. So that's counterproductive. Next would be to review the land use categories and determine if they are appropriate and whether any new categories are needed. The land use categories include low-density residential, the mixed-use, employment center, We've got, I think the employment center is probably one that could use some, potentially breaking it out to better define what types of employment are appropriate in different locations in the county, because employment center could be everything from an office park to heavy industrial. Also, to look at the future land use map and provide updates throughout the map as necessary. And then, of course, review and update all of the land use policies as necessary. Chapter 3 is the Transportation and Thoroughfare Plan. That was just updated a year ago, in August. But there are updates just related to the Code of Virginia, local, state, and regional plans. FAMPO is currently working on their 2045 plan, so as that moves forward, we'll want to be sure we're consistent with that. Review and update the transportation impact analysis policy if that's necessary. Review and update the policies and strategies. But I think the biggest thing is to look at the thoroughfare plan list itself and prioritize projects. That'll be a big help to the Board of Supervisors as the board seeks funding, to have a prioritized list of projects, projects that will provide the biggest benefit and address, you know, the major issues sooner. So the Transportation Committee did go through and prioritize projects within the thoroughfare plan, but that occurred in 2014. So it really does need to be looked at again, and I would recommend that our plan reflect a prioritized list. Chapter 4 is the Public Facilities Plan. Going through and reviewing and updating the existing facility information, there are a few new facilities. The fire stations have changed certainly. There are some more amenities at parks that can be updated. Review and update each facility focusing on levels of service, service areas, and facility standards. So those would be the public schools, FREM, sheriff, solid waste, water and sewer, library, and parks and recreation. There is an update occurring currently to the Water and Sewer Master Plan, so we'll want to weave into this plan the findings of their plan. And we also want to ensure that we have good levels of service and standards so that as we evaluate residential rezonings, we have sufficient data to be able to back up our proffer analysis. Chapter 5 and Chapter 6 are pretty minor updates, historic resources and natural resources. Really, it's just going through, updating background information as necessary, and then going through the goals, policies, and strategies to be sure that they're up to Staff does recommend some additional topics that receive greater focus in the plan, and perhaps its own chapter would be an economic development plan. And then also, looking at greater focus on demographic data and projections related to housing, economic data, labor statistics, unemployment. Really, in our plan right now, we just look at population. But it might be good, in this plan, to look at what some of the trends are related to different demographics, age groups, so that we can better understand what types of housing we may need in the future. And also, this could be beneficial to economic development and the economic development plan in terms of attracting new businesses and targeting types of businesses.
These focus items would be part of that economic development plan, or is-
Yes, it would probably be part of the economic development plan and probably part in the introduction portion of the plan.
Are there any other, I guess I'm really interested in what's going to be included in this new chapter for economic development. I'm just wondering what the thought process is there, what you had in mind for the major categories that we would consider as far as land use is concerned?
Well, I think that we would need to have a good link there between the employment center designation and the land use, the future land use map, and what does that mean? What are we trying to attract? What is Spotsylvania County best set up to attract in terms of economic development? And what changes could we make, you know, what steps could we take to try to attract other types of economic development that are desirable? The county does have a prioritized list of types of businesses that we'd like to attract, and they include healthcare, defense, industry. Help me here, somebody who remembers them off the top of their head.
I think, ah, excuse me.
No worries.
I believe another one that you'll see is the advanced manufacturing, clean, clean manufacturing type of operations. One of the big issues, just kind of going deeper into this, one of the issues that we've seen over the years is when we get applications occasionally that require a special use permit or rezoning in an area that may be identified as employment center is, you may have a warehouse, you may have a light, advanced manufacturing, you know, clean rooms and things like that facility. And then all of a sudden, you also get a recycling, metal recycling center, or a car recycling firm that comes in and wants to locate within the same industrial park. And we end up having this conflict where existing industrial users and this more, what might be considered more of a nuisance use, but obviously has value, recycling has to happen some way for these type of firms in their industry. But they end up conflicting with one another, but when you look at the actual definition and what employment center is, by the comp plan, everything looks like it's fine. But when you get down, rubber hits the road, you have conflicting uses where industry A says, "We don't want industry B next door." So we end up having this kind of conflict that happens. And I think the direction that we're trying to determine is what types of employment center use is, whether it be an office park or warehouse, work together harmoniously with one another, and where, within the county, is there a good location for a recycling center? Not taking away their value by any means, but, you know, if they're going to conflict with existing industrial parks, or to change the character of the industrial park and run other businesses out of the county, that's a concern of ours. I think it's the economic development goal to try to maintain their operations and promote expansion, but you kind of end up with these conflicting interests that kind of wear on one another, and we've noticed that over the years. And that's why we kind of brought this up as a concern we may want to consider.
Yeah, and I think the discussion, what I'd be very careful of, and what I would look for, is if we discriminate one against the other. It's a subjective issue, it's, you know, that we discriminate here, and I'd be very careful of that. And I'm interested in how this moves forward, so.
Yeah, I totally agree on that one.
I'm just trying to get my hands around the economic development part, too. We have an economic development strategic plan. We have targeted industries. We have technology zones. We've got hub zones, you know, we've got tourism zones. So we've got stuff out there. So what I'm hearing is we want to minimize, as they're out doing what they do, get to the point where it's before us, that there's, minimize or eliminate as many of these conflicts or issues. So it's a clear understanding, at least from the planning side of it, what we want to see in the things that are already being created. We're not creating anything new. We're just making sure that they kind of merge or link together better as they go through the process.
Right, and we didn't have, we don't have, you know, an end result in mind as to what exactly this economic development portion of it would be. But as you mentioned, we have, we have these various zones. They're not documented in our comprehensive plan in any way. There's all these resources out there, and we would like to at least, you know, pull them together, have an inventory, identify where they are, what are the zones where, you know, we have the tourism zone, where is the hub zone? So that is just an important part right there, is to identify what we have existing and potentially what else is out there that we can take advantage of.
What do you, what is your strategy, Jacob and Wanda, both of you, for kind of moving forward with identifying what we're talking about or building that so that we're not, you know, duplicating anything?
Right.
And we definitely don't want to, I mean, there's a lot of time being spent into ED and what's out there, and they know it better than we do it.
Well, they would be a big player in this.
And they would be a player in it, because they would like say, okay, what's the impediments in an area? And we do all that. So I just, I guess that would be the strategy. So we would probably have at a minimum probably just one work session, just dealing with ED stuff, because it's pretty large.
Right, right. And economic development would be very much involved in this effort, and perhaps the Economic Development Authority in guiding it as well.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that the ED folks and the EDA, they have clear guidance, because I know in the past, it's always been, you know, what are we supposed to do? You know, so what are we, don't want, and we're not, it's not our job to tell them what to do, but they need to have clear guidance, both from the board and the EDA and everything. So everybody's on the same sheet of paper, and there's no difference. What I don't want to do is get going into this thing, and then all of a sudden, well, what are we doing here? You know, we're changing something or doing that? No, we just want to make sure that we've had the same set of parameters as we move forward, and then we're enhancing them so they work better during our process.
Just to that as well, and this is just from years of observation, I think the ultimate goal is to have a shared vision with the Economic Development Group. And the concern that I would have at this point is that economic development does have their own plans, that in the sense are maybe separated from what the comprehensive plan's vision is. And I know the importance of shovel-ready sites for large industrial complexes. For instance, the county has a, is a diminishing inventory of readily developable industrial acres. If you want a large footprint warehouse, for instance, a lot of the industrial acres that would enable that are, have gone away. And I know a lot of these applicants are looking for quick. They want it by-rite development. They want the site ready. And the concern is if economic development is trying to attach, attract a potential manufacturing operation, or that our comprehensive plan land use vision may end up conflicting with what they're trying to attract. There are sweet areas in the county that are probably best served for these type of attractions, and if our comp plan doesn't meet that or have parity with what economic development goals are, we have a conflict here, and that's what we're trying to address. So everything kind of falls in line. There's a shared vision with the comp plan, economic development goals. I would say historically, that has not been a very strong element in this document, is the economic development.
Well, you've hit the nail on the head, and what's happened is there's a paradox here. We say we have a low inventory of industrial zone property, yet we have people coming every time you turn around to rezone it because they can't market it. They can't do anything with it.
Right.
So that's a paradox. So what do you do? You say, "I'm sorry, we're not going to change rezoning," and you're just stuck with that? Or do we try to be flexible enough? So that's a part of it. So that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. That's, yeah, you hit the nail on the head.
All right.
Yes. Go ahead, Wanda.
One of the biggest hurdles I see here is getting data as real-time as possible. What happens is you're getting five-year-old data that you're then using to then make trend analysis for 10, 15 years out. And if you can find a way to get that information up to date on, you know, months instead of years behind, that would be advantageous. And I don't really know what sources are out there for that, but that would be very important, I think, in this, in this plan especially.
All right. The other topics that we thought should have some greater focus include housing. The Fredericksburg Area Realtors Association just completed a housing study for Spotsylvania County, and we'll get you a copy of that at your next meeting. They may be willing to come and do a presentation as well, but they contracted out to do a housing study looking at future needs related to housing. And so housing, I think, is an important aspect to include everything from affordable housing, entry-level housing, all the way, you know, through to senior housing. Broadband, that's something we keep hearing about. How do we ensure that our county is well-connected through broadband and that we have the appropriate infrastructure to attract some of these businesses that will help to buoy our tax base? But also, just in terms of serving residents. Emerging industries and development trends. Here, we're thinking about such things as solar. We've become an area of interest for solar companies. There are now four of them that have contacted us. And then also, development trends. We've had a very large number of apartments go up in the last couple of years. So looking at how those would affect the county and what the policy should be moving forward. Revitalization areas, there's been interest in looking at some air, some commercial corridors and figuring out ways to revitalize them. And then specific areas such as Thornburg. Thornburg is really, you know, that exit right there, those road projects are moving forward. We're going to have, you know, new road, new interchange there, and that area should be, there should be a vision for the area. What do we want that area to be as it continues to develop? How do we best set it to attract the types of uses that would be most beneficial to the county there?
Wanda, on the Realtors Association, you said that they have a report they've issued, and we can have a copy of that?
Yes.
And I would like to talk to you about also a presentation, and I'm most interested in the data, what impacts a sale, what they see the trends, because a lot of times, what we hear in public hearings, particularly with cell towers, is it doesn't, it devalues property. I haven't found any data, and, you know, I'm most interested in trying to find out what, you know, cell towers, the lack of cell towers, or broadband, or whatever we want to call it, has on real estate, the ability to sell or buy a home. So I'm very interested in that, and even if it means bringing them in for a presentation, I-
And so the report that they have completed is on housing specifically in Spotsylvania County. They also are doing a report on apartments. I believe that's not as specific to Spotsylvania County, but looking more at the George Washington region and apartment development in the region-
Yep.
-and future needs there. And that's a separate report that is supposed to be out in the next few months. So those would be two good resources.
Chairman. Yes, sir.
Wanda, in those reports, do you know if they'll have information regarding the impact it'll, it'll have on, say, our schools, our public safety, our courts?
Yeah, it does have information related to population and jobs, expected jobs, but it doesn't get so specific as to impacts on our public facilities. No, it doesn't.
Two things, Wanda. One would be, as we kind of, this is kind of our first look and strategy and see how we're going. I would be interested in terms of what the staff's feelings are of what areas we don't need to fool with, and maybe why? Because this is a huge task here. It'd be nice to say, "Okay, we don't really need to go here, and this is why." And regards to how we might, and then we can react to that and say, "Well, wait a minute, now I think we maybe should," or whatever, but at least, so we can at least eliminate by chapter maybe some things that we don't need to spend a lot of time on, and then focus on the stuff like you're talking about, the transportation, the ED, all this, the housing. I mean, all this stuff is kind of interrelated, but there are some things in there that are probably, we should probably just leave alone, and-
Right. So I think that the biggest thing that the Planning Commission will need to focus on are the policies. There's a lot of updates needed within the plan, but it's statistical information, it's to bring it up to date as to what other plans have been adopted in the area. So a lot of that can just happen at a staff level. So, you know, I think as we move through this, there'll be a number of updates to it that are just matter of course. And then really, what will be needing input from the Planning Commission on are some of the policies and goals as we move forward. But a vast majority of them probably are still completely appropriate.
Right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We worked long and hard on writing this thing five years ago, and what I'm hearing right now is that there's some misinformation or regular antique information to put it correctly. I would like to see we just address those areas and bring everything up to date. I would consider this new chapter you're proposing, but on the whole of it, I don't see why we can't just use existing information and make it relevant to today.
You know, I think that's generally what we're proposing to do.
That's great, that's great. Well, one other question. What do the supervisors take on this whole review? What have they said?
We haven't gone to the board yet. The Planning Commission generally leads the comprehensive plan update process.
Yeah, I know, but I had heard that they had already made some comments as to what they like or not like. Any information on that?
I think that, you know, the, some of the items on here like broadband have come up over the years.
Oh, okay.
The revitalization areas was brought up at a board meeting to look at the Route One area just north of Exit 126. So some of these are things that have come up sporadically over time, but I can't think of.
So they haven't voiced any wishes about how we should handle this or where else we should go?
Not as a board as a whole, no.
There have been some individual comments?
Right, right.
Could you share them? Or not?
Well, the board did talk about a strategic plan a couple of meetings ago.
Uh huh.
And I had done a presentation to them about the comprehensive plan update process, thinking there may be some overlap. And, you know, they made comments about wanting to look at, you know, planning for schools, transportation in their strategic plan, but their vision was not to take over the comprehensive plan update process themselves.
Right.
So really, I'd say that their comments were more generic in nature at that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But what we would do, what I hope to do is take the information, the feedback that we received from the Planning Commission tonight, and then what we'll do is develop a plan on how to move forward with this update and a timeline. And we would want to go to the board fairly soon after that, just to get their input so that, you know, we're sure they're on board with the process as well before we spend time on it.
Wanda, just, I want to touch base a little bit on Transportation, Thoroughfare Plan, which, you know, you mentioned the Thornburg area, which is moving along and that's important we need to look at. Plus, the whole idea of what the vision was for the Jackson Gateway. Plus, it also intertwines with the water sewer master plan. So all those are kind of all together and kind of work. So what I'm hearing is we just need to be maybe a little bit more specific in dealing with this stuff. Plus, our, you know, the whole transportation, how can I say this tactfully? Transportation Virginia is broke. I'm just, I'm going to be blunt. It's just not working the way it needs to work. And I apologize, people don't like that, but that's just the way it is. And so it was a time when, you know, the funding was there. Now the funding is back on the county localities. And in order to get good economic development and to grow successfully, you have to have the right infrastructure. That means the water sewer, the transportation, you need to have that. But you also got to pay for that stuff. And I know right now, the transportation fund, for example, the general fund, from what I've in the past and what I think is 2018, 2019, the general fund's going to have to subsidize the transportation fund just the way with the projects we have now. And then when we talk about prioritizing projects, you know, we can come up with, you know, what our rationale for doing that. And then the board at the end of the day will make whatever determination they want to do. But I think if we can get the vision of, like I said, the ED, the infrastructure and get it all together where it's in sync, where the departments agree, we agree, that's what we want to do, then the board does whatever they want with it at that point. And I think we, I kind of agree with Ms. Thompson, we deal with, if there's inconsistencies or we need a better definition, let's deal with that stuff.
Right.
We need to deal with it. And then the rest of it is, you know, I think, come a long way.
The other topic that we wanted to cover tonight is the public input process. So there are some options for early input. We talked last time about, that we talked about this topic, that the Planning Commission really wants to have work sessions work through the plan and not have committees that work on various chapters. So what we've got here is a couple of options for getting early input in the planning process. One of them would be voting district meetings that are sponsored by the Planning Commissioner, have the board member. And that way, we could focus in on each voting district and then the Planning Commissioner knows what the citizens have said for their voting district. The con related to that approach is just that those really are artificial boundaries. And for example, in Livingston, you've got, you're going to have people from the lake, you're going to have people from Fawn Lake and you're going to have the farms in between. And so a lot of different interests all represented at once within that geographical area. The other approach we could take are general meetings that are more geographically located, one down in the Lake Anna area, you know, one that's more in our urbanized area. So there would probably be fewer meetings with that approach. You know, we might be looking at four meetings spread throughout the county in that approach. And really, the con in that one is that there's no one person, no one planning commissioner that's carrying forward, you know, a cohesive understanding of what the people in their voting district desire to see. So those are two different options. What we would envision at these meetings is just to talk about the comprehensive plan, what it is, why we're going through the update process, what we're hoping to accomplish. And then really turning it over to the citizens to provide input. We can have maps where they put sticky notes on the maps and make notes about, you know, problem areas or areas that they have suggestions. So we can have a number of ways for citizens to provide input during the process, both at meetings and also through just providing something online for them to be able to provide input. So wanted to get your thoughts related to getting some early input from citizens as we move through this process.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. If, we've already talked about just going through this thing and updating it and a lot of it just leave alone. If we're just updating information and bringing it current, doesn't all of this, bringing these folks in, just kind of complicate everything?
That, well, it.
I mean, if we're sticking to what we've got and fixing what we've got, I just see this just complicating and prolonging this thing. Not that they don't have a voice, I'm not saying that. And not that they don't have a will. They have a right to use their voice. But if we're going to proceed on the plan of fixing what we've got, then this information is, to me, is irrelevant. That's just me.
I understand what you're saying. I don't necessarily agree with you. I think we should have meetings and have public input because I think if we don't, it kind of makes it look like we're not interested in what they have to say. So I personally would like to see meetings. I kind of like the general meeting because I do agree, I mean, if you have meetings in different districts, just like you just said, we have people at Lake Anna all the way down to Fawn Lake and they're going to have different ideas. I personally would like, I like the general meeting, having one meeting, have several meetings, but at different locations throughout the county and getting everybody's input. Especially, we did one, you did one when we were looking at the bypass here.
Right.
And your staff, you and your staff did a great job. And I think we got a lot of valuable input from the, from the community there. And a lot of people showed up from different parts of the county. So I'd be in favor of the general meetings, but definitely I'm in favor of having public meetings.
Your thoughts?
Wanda, I think, I kind of, I agree with Howard. I'd be more leaning toward the general than the district meetings for several reasons. Though there, you do get the pulse of the district, I think if we're going to look at minimizing how much intrusion we do into it, the general meetings may suffice. But also, I was thinking, a lot of times when you have these meetings, you give, you know, you're looking for input and that input's like all over the place. And I'm thinking, it'd be nice to know, let people react to either what we currently have and what we're currently maybe going to change for some reason and why we have to change it, you know, stuff like that. So I think that, just moving forward. Because a lot of those meetings, you know, when you go to them, says, well, you know, people want this and they want that. And you can, you know, kind of give them an overview, the process of how it goes, but it's basically who shows up and what they want. And a part of it is what I would want to know is a reaction. This is what we're looking at moving toward doing and this is what we've done. I mean, is that good? Are you on board with that or you don't like that or you're indifferent with it?
So you're thinking that the meeting would occur a little bit further into the process?
I'm thinking, for me, I'd want to get, you know, I don't want to exclude anybody and I want to hear what they have to say, but I think I want to hear more of, are we going down the right track or not? Other than, I've got six tracks to go down and I got to pick it. And then the one I pick is, you know, not what's a bunch of, and that's my, you know, that's our, what we're tasked to do. But I was thinking maybe a little bit down. I know it's a little bit different than the usual, but correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, you've done this, you're old hand at this.
Yeah, there are, there are different ways to handle it and there's pluses and minuses to each way. But I would say that if we went a little further into the process, it would probably be to look at the land use chapter at the Planning Commission level, make some recommended changes and then take that. Because I think the land use is what really is of most interest to a lot of people. And you can always weave in, transportation, of course, is very.
Right.
High up there as well. But when you're looking at land use, you can weave in transportation pretty easily.
Yeah. What do you guys think? Do it.
Well, I'd like to change my position after hearing a.
Review.
Yes, upon further review. I agree with Howard. I think a general meeting would be great and yes, I totally agree that the people should have a voice.
As I sit here thinking about this, I don't disagree with that, but I want to be very careful with the message we're trying to convey, what the end result of this is. I think if we're looking, we need to be very careful with this because if we're just looking for some minor adjustments and updating a few things, that's totally different than a major comprehensive review, you know, that we go through. So I do think that meetings would be helpful. I just want to be very clear on what's the message, what is our goal with this so that it doesn't explode on us and get out of control. And I really don't have an opinion whether it's by district or, you know, however, you're going to have to facilitate it, right?
So, yeah, so with our staff here, us three, fewer meetings.
Fewer. I would agree with that.
Would help us move forward quickly. Because we, if we had seven meetings, you know, that would be like the next three months probably, setting that up and getting those arranged and scheduled and so.
Yeah, because as I sit here listening to this, I'm still unsure what we're trying to accomplish. And I think before we go to that step, I'd like to see a little more detail of, you know, a more refined strategy and what the message is and what we need input on.
Right.
Because this could get out of control very.
Yeah, I can see where it would. For example, when we get down to transportation element, there'll be people, depending on where we have that meeting, will know, why haven't we paved Spotswood first road? I mean, that's going to happen.
Right.
And that's what they're there for. And that's really not what we're trying to do. So I think Greg kind of hit something. Maybe what we could do is, moving forward, is if it's a general consensus that, you know, we move to the general meetings, number one. Number two, let's come back to us, you know, with a little bit more detail. Look, we're not, we don't need to do anything in these areas. We're going to leave them alone. So we know what that is. Now, these are the areas we're thinking about, we need to do it, this is why. So then we kind of, as we move forward, before we have the meetings, we know what the strategy's going to be and the topics are going to be in the meeting. At work?
We can certainly do that.
Is that some guidance for you?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would just ask you, if, when we get to that point and we have the general meetings, just because I represent such a large district and so spread out, that at least one of those meetings would be here at the courthouse or a central location for those folks, if everybody agrees with that.
And knowing that, Lake Anna is different than here too, so it's.
Would you envision the general meetings, if you have three of them, say, instead of seven for the, would you envision those being topics, chapter-specific meetings? Say, we're covering these two? Or just each one of them would be, we're going to cover all of them, one through whatever, in each meeting and go from there? Because like, to your point, transportation is going to rule each and every one of them if we have, that's all it's going to rule. We say, hey, this is, transportation is in this meeting. Maybe only people come to that meeting. Either way, it doesn't matter. Transportation may still rule, but I'd love to get input on other areas as well and not just focus on transportation.
Well, you've already said that five and six just need tweaking.
Right.
There's no real change in any of that. So we could probably eliminate those two topics.
Right.
Just tweaking amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I think that the land use focus, each of the meetings be the same, but really focus on the land use. Have the future land use map there because that represents the whole county. It represents the future vision for how it will develop. It includes, you can weave into that, the roadways. The roadways are part of the future land use map. So if someone wanted to talk about transportation, they certainly could. But land use, you really can focus in on how is the county going to develop or what is the vision for how the county will develop? And so I think that's the best approach is to focus in on that area.
Agreed. All right.
Now, moving through the update, some specific topics will be discussed. And we do have a transportation committee that is very much involved in advising the board related to transportation. So the thought is that we would look to the transportation committee for some input related to the thoroughfare plan and in particular, going through the exercise of prioritizing projects. They've done it once. There's a method out there that they can follow again and to go through that list and be sure that it's appropriately prioritized. And then, of course, with the public facilities, we'll need to get input from each of the department directors, the agency directors, so that we're appropriately representing their levels of service and planning for them. There's the possibility out there for some focused meetings potentially, you know, looking at housing. There are various associations that deal with housing in the area or economic development. We could pull in input related to the Economic Development Authority, the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, the Fredericksburg Area Chamber of Commerce. Those are, those are out there as potential resources, I guess I would say, should we want to go down that road. So I don't really need any input from the Planning Commission at this point in time related to any of this. I think it will, as we move forward, we can figure this all out, but just to let you know what some of the options are for gaining input on specific topics. And then during the update process, the Planning Commission could consider having public comment periods open during the work sessions for input on the particular topic that's being discussed that night. And then at the end, when we do have a draft plan, I think we'd go through the same process again and have general meetings to present the proposal and the plan before moving forward to public hearings. And we're also working with our Information Services Department to see about other ways of gaining input online. We're hoping to put up a Facebook page soon for the planning department so that we can get information out there. And also have methods online, perhaps surveys or easy ways for people to input comments online that would help during the process. And that way, people can provide input, not have to come to a meeting or if they miss a meeting. Give them an easy method to provide some input. So that's really what we wanted to cover tonight so that we could go back and come up with a plan to propose to the Planning Commission on how we move forward. And I completely hear you and understand your position related to the last update was a major overhaul of the comprehensive plan. Staff has always thought that this is a fairly minor update and so while it seems like there's a lot out there, as you go through these slides, I think a lot of it, we're going to look at it and say, that's all just fine, let's leave that as it is. But here, this policy doesn't ring true anymore for whatever reason, let's look at tweaking it. So we'll look, we'll start working on the introduction chapter and the land use chapter to try to identify those areas that we think could use some additional attention. Like I said, a lot of it, staff can simply work on updating with the technical aspects.
And you'll provide us a list of stuff saying, hey, we don't really need to fool with this at all.
Right, yes, yes. So we'll, we'll try to focus it in. So we'll try to focus it in for you and see if you concur. Is there any other input that we should take away tonight to come up with our plan on moving forward?
I don't think so. I think we're, I think we're in good shape. Do you need any action from us tonight?
No.
Okay. Anything else on that, Wanda?
That's it.
I'll jump right into the next item. We are right on schedule here, any new business that we need to discuss this evening. Any other public comment? Having heard none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
We will do a roll call, I believe, right? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Burns.
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Medina.
Mr. Nuozbocie.
That's unanimous. Thank you.